Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's about 50/50 people who stood and showed us their waist and those of us that sat in front of the camera. I don't know what the protocol is. Great. So our first item of business is the approval of the minutes. There was one change that we've sent to Karen. It was relating to the appointment of our auditors. Somehow the second in the voting got omitted, but we put that in. So otherwise, again, good job Karen summarizing what was a pretty long meeting and a lot of public comment. But are there any other comments or issues with the minutes? So with that, I move that we adopt these minutes as altered with the adding of the second and the unanimous approval of the auditors. So I'm seeing everybody's on board. We're good. All right? All right. Next item is the Pension Investment Update and Investment Manager Review. We asked the members of the Subcommittee for the Pension Retirement Plan Subcommittee to join us tonight so that we could efficiently deal with one action item. We are pleased to have Chris Cashmar with us tonight. And Amy, do we need to introduce this or just let Chris take on, take over?
So Chris can take over. Tyler Polk is also here. He can give a brief update on the RFQ if you all like. And if you have any questions, I have the RFQ update as part of my finance director's report. But while we have him on the line, you have any questions, he's here as well.
Great.
Well, great. Amy, thank you and good evening, everyone. Again, Chris Cashmar from FIA. It's great to see everyone. We, most importantly, trust folks are well and safe. And we do have some materials here, knowing you have a busy agenda where we'll hit the high. As mentioned, there is a contemplated action item for the group collectively to think through. And we can talk you through that idea momentarily. In your materials, I believe in the packet, at least on my screen, the FIA materials start on page eight in the cover page labeled First Quarter Performance Sumories. I hope people can see that. And if you are able to scroll down on what in our information is labeled Page Five, probably be untoward of us not to just give a quick update to the Board of Finance and to the Subcommittee members. I think as we indicated in January, we had entered into an agreement to merge with a peer firm out of Chicago by the name of DeMayo Schneider and Associates. And we did that, as you'll remember, for a number of reasons, not the least of which is that scale is becoming increasingly important in our marketplace. And the collective firm will have close to $200 billion of assets under rank up in the top 20 or so largest institutional consulting firms in the world with, you know, experienced in games and research staff and technology and scale of offices and the like. So that transaction did close as planned at the end of the quarter essentially. I think as we mentioned in earlier collateral to the town, Tyler and I will remain your lead consultants. Absolutely no changes to how we engage with you folks or the services we render. We operated for years with the town. Everything will be identical and changes through time that we do bring to the board will be done in a thoughtful, deliberate manner and obviously reflecting the best collective thinking of the new combined firm. So.
And can I just butt in and say that Mark Wetzel serves on another board with me? And he's a great guy. I'm thrilled to see his name there as your new president. He's very thoughtful, thorough, terrific person. So I'm glad to see that.
Oh, great. Well, we'll certainly share those accolades. Thank you very much. So that was just a quick update on that front. Really, we wanted to just give the group the benefit of that update. If you continue to scroll ahead here, well, just very quickly, I know this is unfortunately becoming old hat for everyone. But if you skip ahead to the next page quickly, you will see on page six what obviously was an extraordinarily challenging quarter in the markets, as you all well know. And it culminated in the month of March that became the most volatile month in the history of the capital markets. And you can see in the upper right-hand corner of the page there. In historically, when, you know, bear markets, a 20% downdraft in equity prices from the top typically can take three-plus months to take hold. This one took hold in a mere 16 days. So it was extraordinarily sharp and painful. And what had been a decent narrative around the global economy as the year began has obviously collapsed into the pandemic that we now all know and live in. And clearly, we are in a recession and a slowdown and expect that recession to continue for the next several months anyways. Although I suppose there's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel towards the back half of the year. The response, as you all well know, on the government level has been unprecedented. And whether that's the CARES Act that we depict there and its sheer magnitude and size and the rapidity frankly with which it was put together and unleashed, really married to unprecedented response from the Federal Reserve as well. You may remember now, it seems like ancient history, but back in St. Patrick's Day of all days, the Fed on a Sunday surprisingly cut interest rates to essentially zero. They had never done that before, of course, and have since then added program after program designed to add liquidity to the system and address some areas of the market that had seized up pretty dramatically in the month of March. And we'll share a couple of high-level numbers with you momentarily. As you all know, April has been actually was a relatively strong month in the markets. And maybe some of that stability is an outcome of the, again, the magnitude and the rapid response that's been unleashed. I think we saw a figure somewheres that globally now were somewheres north of $16.5 trillion collectively of stimulus that's being kind of thrown at the crisis. So certainly the pretty impressive. But nonetheless, on page seven there, you'll see unfortunately, right, for the first quarter, there were really very few places high. We dwelled on these figures, of course, but it was certainly in the equity markets, difficult sledding and difficult operating environment, as you see there, with double-digit returns uniformly across the equity markets. There were pockets of opportunity within fixed income. They were constrained really to government and treasury securities, as you see there towards the bottom half of the page. I will confess to you, you know, most of the active bond managers tend to overweight those segments of the market. So it made for some difficult relative outcomes. Although improving outcomes certainly in the month of April. And again, we can share some of those data points in a minute. So I do want to be sensitive to schedules and time. So I'm going to jump here quickly, maybe one last set of details relating to the markets on page eight. I think you, the town has always understood this. I know our committees through time have been pretty patient and disciplined with responses and knowing that these declines do happen with some degree of regularity in markets. Maybe not as sharp as we saw in March, but they do happen. And the depiction on page eight, as you can see, is just a reflection again. If you can make it out on the top half of the page there, you can see tucked in the upper left-hand corner, the green line evidencing the bear market we just went through. And you can see how sharp and dramatic it was, particularly in the month of March. I think as we all know, right, the benefits of being patient are fairly well-known. And we just provide a couple of data points here. You can see on the bottom half of the page that show previous peak-to-troth declines of magnitude. That's noteworthy. And then the kind of the pickup, if you will, kind of after the fact, once markets stabilize, of course, right? Every environment is different. Every economic backdrop's a little bit different. No guarantees, of course. But typically, the patient investor is pretty well rewarded if we can kind of grit and bear our teeth after, again, what we all know was a very difficult fourth, first quarter, excuse me. So that is, that is a very high level of what went on in the markets. I am happy to pause there momentarily to see if folks have any questions or thoughts or comments or concerns for us. And then from there, we'll take a minute or two to look at the portfolios and kind of where they stand in the action item before you tonight.
Chris, this is Rob. So, you know, sort of simply down, down 20%, 20% plus from the beginning of the year. Where are we relative to where we were the beginning of 2019?
Yeah, so we are, we are down, Rob. You know what? I don't, I can get you those exact figures. If you scroll ahead, I can, I can partially answer the question. If you scroll ahead to page 10, you'll see there the depiction of the three pension plans. We can start there. And what we do provide you is kind of the end of the quarter, right? Which kind of has the full bearing and headwinds that was Q1. And again, we'll get to those numbers and we'll see and momentarily actually what the portfolios did in the quarter. You do see there, again, what I mentioned or previewed earlier in April, the kind of the upticks there across the three plans. So if you kind of look down on the bottom there and the horizontal gray hash, the portfolio totals, you can see that what was a $22.3 million balance in the town plan at the end of March is now 23. What is it? $8 million? And you can kind of see similarly sized gains for the Board of Ed and the police plans.
Thank you.
But if you want, Rob, it's a fair question. We'll come back to this allocation.
Yeah, there's a one-year, three-year, five-year on page 11. So that actually sort of answers the question.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to go to exactly. So you do see there the results. So listen, it was, there's no blushing. There's, you know, there's no hiding behind the fact that it was an awful first quarter for investors. And balanced plans that kind of lean into equities, the way we do with the town pension plans, necessarily so. As you all know, given our return targets, some tough sledding, down about 14% for the programs in Q1. You can see the longer dated numbers there. You don't have this detail, and I won't go through each and every one on your page, to give you a little individual perspective quickly. Your Vanguard Anchor Index that you use in your domestic equity programs, it was up 10% in the month of April. Berman Genesis, your small-cap managers up almost 10%. Your international managers are up 4.9%, respectively. Your fixed income managers are up decently, somewhere's on the order of 3%. So there has been a kind of a modicum of stability here, as we mentioned. And the markets have come back, have come back a good deal. So that is, that is encouraging, of course. But if we go back, just momentarily, if the Board would, to page 10 and the allocation exhibit, I know Amy sent around some information to the group. If you remember, our rating system across the entirety of the roster of the pension managers, we did have two managers on watch as we began the year. One was Templeton Institutional Foreign Small Company. If you can make your way down there into the International Equity Section in the middle of the exhibit. They continue on watch, not for performance reasons, because as I mentioned, March was very good for them. And they've actually held in reasonably well. But they did have some retirements up the research ranks that we're mindful of and are keeping an eye on that. So that's something we'll keep you posted on. The other strategy, you may remember down on the bottom of the page, and it's one of the smaller mandates in the pension plans, is Van Eck Global Hard Asset. You'll make them out way down at the bottom of that same exhibit. And there are some more material changes there and changes that have, are problematic for us from a rating perspective. So Van Eck is kind of changing their stripes under the hood. They've become somewhat more quantitatively oriented, which is very different than kind of the fundamental approach that they've operated with in the past. And they've started to get into segments of the energy markets that are very different from their history. So Integrated Oils is an example, is just something that they've never shown any interest in or success in or experience with that they're starting to invest in in a meaningful way. And when you put everything together, our analysts just didn't feel like the strategy would remain as we had known it for a long time. So if you can make it out there in the far right, it's not a material change. But you can see what we're asking the Board to consider tonight is eliminating that Van Eck strategy altogether from the plans and kind of redistributing, if you will, those proceeds and that target percentage into the domestic equity segment of the program there. Again, as you can make out in the far, two columns to the right, not dramatic changes, certainly well within the realm of the existing policy statement and the ranges there. But a small change nonetheless, as we just lost confidence in Van Eck. And other than those two managers, the balance of the program, we do continue to have on maintain. So we didn't have any action items contemplated beyond just that one. So let me pause there because I know I kind of jumped around a little bit and threw a lot at the group. But happy to get your questions if you've got them.
I have a question. Rob? I can't hear you.
I know. Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Thanks. When you put it into the domestic equity, are you putting it in percentage-wise between the two plans that we have there? Are you going to put it all in Vanguard?
Now, we split it up, Lisa, if you look there. So we took, it's 150 basis points, right? It's 1.5%. So on a target basis, you can see what we've done. We kind of proportionalized. We gave 1% to the Berman just to round it out. And we did that because if you look at the kind of the capitalization profile of Van Eck strategy, they do cross over into kind of both large and mid-cap names. And we thought in terms of like-to-like, that was the kind of the cleanest way to do it. The bulk's going to the Vanguard index, but we do have a little bit to Newburger, too.
Thank you.
I have a question also. This is Linda.
Go ahead, Linda.
Thank you, Rob. So I'm not an investment person by background. So just this terminology of an inflation protection investment as opposed to, you know, small-cap, large-cap, domestic equity, international, all those other things, I know what they are. But I don't quite know what inflation protection investment means. What kind of a thing do you invest in for that? And what's the goal?
Yeah, that's a great question, Linda. And I think it's a little bit of a catch-all phrase. So inflation protection assets can kind of run across a whole type of different strategies. And in fact, it's a little bit of a misnomer, but Van Eck actually invests in natural resource equities. And those equities historically have been effective ways to defend against the ravages, of which we obviously haven't had recently, of inflation. Similar to the way that commodity markets will tend to have that attribute, as will TIPS more directly, which is embedded in the Vanguard Inflation Protection Securities, the actual bonds that reset to inflation. So it's a catch-all category. It offers a little bit of diversification to the program. And moreover, you know, the design there is to keep a little bit, it's what, 3.5% on a recommended basis? We don't know what ultimately will happen, right? But as I mentioned earlier, we've got $16 trillion of stimulus around the world, lots of money being printed. You certainly have on the surface the conditions that could, they may not, but could elicit outsized inflation at some point down the road. So to have a little bit of protection in the portfolios to that via these type of strategies, we think is worthwhile. But short answer to your question is it's a host of different strategies. And the design is, at least historically, they've been areas of the markets that have proven to be stores of value when we have periods of inflation.
Okay, thank you.
So Amy, this is sort of a point of order for me. I guess we have a motion that we're going to consider. Should we do that before Chris goes through the rest of your deck or should we let him finish? Chris, why don't you go ahead and finish and then we'll come back. I want to be sure that we get interaction with the Subcommittee before the Board of Finance takes action as well. So.
Rob, I just wanted to ask one question of Chris before we move on. When was the Van Eck Global, when was the position put on?
That is a great question. It's been on for quite some time. My database here without screwing up where we are in the strategy. Can I come back to you with an answer on that? It's been in the program for several years and we've got it warehoused in our database. I just don't have ready access to it right now.
Okay. Maybe as. That's fine. That's fine. We can, we can move on.
It's been several years, however, since it's been in the program. I guess the only other thing I would finish with, and I thought Tyler might have a little bit of information as well for the group. Just so we complete the loop for the benefit of the Board and the Subcommittee members who are in attendance, on page 15 is the OPEB Trust. Just so you've got that information in hand. Remember, right, we've got this all indexed currently with Liberty Bank. Basically, the new custodian there, you see kind of the same relationship in a broad market value perspective depicted on page 15 there. What was $15.7 million at the end of March is now a little bit north of $17 million at the end of April. So as you would expect, right, given what we just described in the markets, we've had a little bit of an uptake there. Similarly, just to finish the final thought on the update, you'll see on the next page, page 16, their performance of the plan. So, you know, not dissimilar to what we saw, right, unfortunately, with the pension plans, down 13.7% for the quarter, kind of running in line, if you will, meta-fees, otherwise, as you would expect in an all-indexed construct. So that's where the OPEB is. No action items contemplated for the Board, the Subcommittee tonight. We just wanted to give you that quick update. And that's what we had on pension and OPEB. And I don't know, defer to the chair whether you want to contemplate the action item now or Tyler can give a quick update. I think there was some follow-up and summary for this work you've been doing recently on the defined contribution front.
Yeah, so let's take care of this action item first. I guess I would ask the Retirement Subcommittee, if you've considered the recommendation to terminate the Van Eck and reallocate as FIA is recommending, so that you can make a recommendation to the Board of Finance and then we can take our action. Not sure who the spokesperson would be for the Retirement Subcommittee, so I'll start with Kevin, just because I know your name. So start with that.
Yeah, so Chris, and then when you get back, when the position was added, I'd just like to know what the total return was for the position. But to Rob's point, I'd move the motion to remove Van Eck and to allocate it according to FIA's proposal.
So I need somebody else from the Subcommittee to second that and then you guys need to vote on it, I guess.
This is Sean. I'll second that.
Then are all the Subcommittee members in favor of the recommendation? Any opposed?
I am.
You're okay with it?
No, he's opposed.
Okay, all right. I don't even know if you have a quorum. But if you don't, we'll take your recommendation. And then the Board of Finance actually has responsibility and authority to approve this on your recommendation. So.
Rob, could you clarify, was that a unanimous vote or not?
It was.
It was. I have, I have Kevin and Sean. Who are the other members from the Subcommittee?
Derek.
Derek?
Chris Peterson, I believe, right? He's not here.
Chris's not on.
So there's three out of four, right?
I'm good, Rob.
Okay, all right.
That's three out of six.
Yeah, there's six members.
Is that good enough, Amy?
Oh, that's right. Who are the Board of Ed members?
So theoretically, there doesn't have to be a unanimous vote because the Board of Finance has the overall oversight. So even if they were to put forth a recommendation, if you all didn't agree with it, you can still do whatever you want.
But we are required to consult with them. Does this count as consulting? Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, they were all invited to the meeting and they were given permission to participate.
Thank you.
Yeah, so based on that, then I would say we should go ahead and take our action. So the action that the Board of Finance would take tonight, we want to, is to move effective May 5, 2020, to eliminate the Van Eck Global Hard Asset Fund, reduce the inflation protection target from 5% to 3.5% and reallocate the 1.5% to domestic equity in accordance with the recommendation provided by fiduciary investment advisors. I need a motion to that effect.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, so moved by Kevin Prowl, seconded by Linda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, so that passes unanimously. So then the next item would be to have, ask Chris to come back and discuss the RFQ process for the defined contribution plans. Or maybe, Amy, are you going to give an update?
This is Tyler Polk. I consult on the defined contribution plan. I'd be happy to give you an update on the RFQ if that works.
That's fine.
I know it's a busy slate, so I'll be, I'll be brief. But the town consulted with us from a project standpoint to do a request for qualification on the defined contribution plans. Right now, you are with MassMutual, which is actually a legacy Hartford retirement platform, given that Hartford is no longer in the business anymore. It was a high-cost option and the RFQ's intent was to lower the overall fees and create efficiencies from a participant and a plan sponsor standpoint. We sent the RFQ out, received responses from AXA, Empower, ICMA, John Hancock, Lincoln, MassMutual, Valic or AIG and Voya. We actually did the analysis of all of those responses, met with the Subcommittee and narrowed that down to a finalist of MassMutual, ICMA and Voya. We did our finalist presentations on Wednesday, remote, of course. That was a first for, I'm sure, a lot of folks. The, obviously, we're still finalizing that recommendation. The overall, I think, average savings for the town employees or participants in the plan will range from anywhere from $50,000 to $70,000 per year. So a pretty big reduction in overall costs. And there's a few more outstanding discussions that we have with respect to the finalists before we move on to a decision or a recommendation. And again, it was with Melissa, Maria, Kevin, Amy and Eric, who were on the Subcommittee that met Wednesday last week to discuss with the finalists.
All right, so no action needs to be taken yet? Okay, great.
No.
All right, thank you, Tyler. Appreciate it. All right. Anything else for Chris or Tyler while we have them? Thank you for, guys, making time to join us and for all the great work you've done for us over all the years. Thank you for guys making time to join us and for all the great work you've done for us over all the years. All right.
Thank you. Everyone be healthy and safe.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. All right. Moving on, next agenda item is the budget status report.
Rob, just, Rob, before we move on, can Maria just give us an update on her findings? We're talking about Bob as far as the RFQ process.
Oh, yeah, sure. Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, sure. So I've spoken to Bob about it and he's going to take a look at, for the record keeping services piece, if I would enter into that contract under my signature or if that would need Board of Finance approval. And we think that's a little different from making the investment choices. So fund design and things of that nature, we think would definitely need to come through Board of Finance ultimately, work through Retirement Plan Subcommittee, come through Board of Finance. But in terms of actually signing off on the contract and selecting the record keeper, that might just fall under our purchasing procedures and just might, again, fall under my signature. So Bob's taking a look at all of that and will get back to us.
Yeah, I'm muted. All right.
Thanks.
Anything else relative to pension plans? Okay, let's move on to the budget status report. Amy?
I'm going to share my screen so you guys can look at what I'm looking at. Okay, can you guys see the statement of revenues for the general fund?
We can.
Yay, I did it. Okay. So just starting all the way at the bottom. So the first thing I just wanted to give you is the overall overview of the revenues of the general fund. So as you can see, as of the end of March, we're at 97% of the budget. If we go back up to where we see the tax department, which is where our tax collections are recorded, we're already at 100% of the budget. And if you look at the budget variance, we are actually a little bit over 100% by about $200,000. The other line item I wanted to take a look at is finance department. You can see that the budget variance here, it looks like that we're running over by about $1.15 million. So just a reminder on this, that this is the bond premium that is associated with the half of the Henry James Project funding. So that's why you're seeing a huge increase over here. Another area I wanted to point out is under the tax collector revenue. If you see in comparison to last year, it looks like we are up $172,000. So about $100,000 of that is related to a large conveyance fee received from the sale of the Simsbury Commons property. And then in addition to that, there has actually been an increase in housing sales and refinancings. The other larger items I wanted to point out is the $29,000 in information technology. And then down here, the $162,000 under Parks and Recreation. So those are just a reminder that we started breaking out the accounting for the revenues that we charged the Board of Education for versus the expenditures. So we're now charging the full expenditure to the expenditure budget and we're recording the revenues and the revenues, whereas before they were netted in the expenditures. So just didn't want you to think that those were large increases for this year. And then moving on to expenditures, we go all the way down. You can see that we are currently, as of March 31, at 73% of expenditures. So for March 31, pretty much exactly where we should be. You can see all the way over to the right here at the bottom that in comparison to the same time last year, there's an increase of $1.3 million. And this is mostly related just to the Board of Education and their just overall increase in the budget. There's nothing outlined here. There's nothing extensive here. If you look over at percent of budget spent, they're at 74%. So it's in line with where we were last year and where they should be. So nothing major there. I wanted to point out for the expenditures that it's not in accordance with where we should be. That's outside of budgetary estimates is our legal services. So you may recall from last meetings that we were keeping an eye on the legal services as they related to to the labor and employment legal services. So we had budgeted $40,000 in this line item. And then as of June 30, we're expected to be over budget with an ending balance of $160,000. So this is exceeding budget by about $120,000. So those are the most up to date estimates we have for that on the legal line item. So I'm just going to go fund by fund and give you basically where we are as of March 31 and then also give you the COVID impact on that. For the general fund, right now, to date, we have actual COVID-related expenditures of about $28,000. So some of these expenditures relate to the social services food programs, to the IT needs for teleworking, cleaning supplies, masks, gloves, additional clerk needs for the public safety meetings, sign-in and overtime. So based on estimates, looking at these expenditures, based on estimates through the end of the year, I'd say our expenditures related to COVID will probably be about $55,000. And then if we take a look at the impact of revenues related to COVID, on the town clerk side, I expected to see a decrease, but actually, this is not happening. We've actually seen an increase due to the number of house sales and the number of refinances. Building permits, similar, expected to see a decrease here. But in talking with the planning director, there's been a slight drop, but overall, it's been pretty steady. Where we are going to see a decrease is with the building rentals and the library fees. So I'm anticipating about an $18,000 loss related to those revenues just because the buildings are closed, not available for rental or usage. So if we take a look at these individual pieces as far as where we're going to end up at the end of the year and just put it all into perspective. So we have COVID-related expenditures of about $55,000, legal over budget by about $120,000 and then COVID revenue impact of about $20,000. So this is a decrease to the general fund of about $200,000. So you also heard me mention that we had excess revenues. Well, we have excess revenues of about $290,000. So through the end of June, I think we'll still be to the good by about $90,000. And this also does not include the bond premium. So I don't like to include the bond premium as part of my excess funds because that really should go back into the debt payments. And it also does not include the $850,000 that we budgeted as a use of reserves. We actually are not going to need those use of reserves. So that shows. And the revenues. The added fund balance for $850,000, so we are not going to need that.
I had a question, Rob.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
You didn't mention Culture Parks and Rec. I know that's a special revenue fund, but the town is obligated to make that fund whole. So can you give us an estimate of where that is going to?
Yep. So like I said, I'm just going to go fund by fund. So after I'm done with the general fund, the Parks and Rec is up next.
Sorry, can I also ask a question? So you're just talking about Board of Selectmen now. Will you also be talking about Board of Ed at some point?
That was my next point.
Oh, very good.
So on the Board of Selectmen side, we're up about $90,000. So now on the Board of Education side, we are still working through estimates. As of right now, we know that we'll have savings of about $350,000. So just for a little bit of background on the governor's executive order. So we're still required to pay our teachers. We're still required to pay our bus contracts. We're still required to pay our special ed contracts under the executive order. So initially, we thought we were going to see a great deal of savings, but that savings has come down as the new executive orders have come out. So right now, we're at about $350,000, but there's probably going to be increases to that as we continue to finalize the contracts that we're in negotiations with vendors. We'll be able to give you finalized estimates at your next regular meeting on May 19. So that $90,000 does not include the Board of Education savings as well. That's completely separate.
And can you explain what the savings are from? I'm assuming things like coaches and janitors and cafeteria?
So right now, the majority of the savings is from the bus contract. We also have some utility savings from the buildings. I'm not sure what else offhand, instructional supplies. I'm sure some of it. I think the bus contract is the majority, though.
And so when you do come back to us next time, can you give us a little more detail about, is there savings in the cafeteria or janitors or?
Yeah, we'll have the breakdown then.
Okay, great. And same with the Board of Selectmen. I'm just trying to have a better understanding too. You know, Board of Selectmen, the town hall is closed. Are there savings from the janitors? I know there were library layoffs. If we could just get a little detail of where those savings came from as well. And expenses.
So that's kind of what I just gave you. So overall, the only losses that we're seeing are related to the additional COVID expenses for the food programs, the IT.
Yeah, Linda, the executive orders that relate to the things that Amy mentioned are broadly written to include most people who would otherwise have worked for the town, even if they're not working, are being paid. So.
Yeah, I was aware of that, but I knew we laid off some library part-time people, for example.
The part-time library layoffs, those were all individuals. And Maria can correct me that I think we're working like eight hours a week, I believe. So I mean, the savings there is not really all that substantial. And then the utilities and stuff, the buildings are still operating. Staff is still going in, staff is going in to check mail. We still have overtime related to cleaning services for the custodians. So overall, really not expecting to see a ton of savings there. If we did at the end, that would be great, but it's not something that I would project. I would remain conservative.
Okay.
So that's it for the general fund. Any other questions on the general fund? Moving on to the Simsbury Farms Fund. So going all the way to the bottom, you'll see that as of March 31, we have a net change in fund balance of $126,000, almost $127,000. And you'll also remember from the previous reports that I gave that we had a change in accounting practice where we had our deferred revenue calculated in last year's, which impact this year's. So if we were truly looking at apples to apples from fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 19, this $126,000 would actually be a negative $116,000. If you were to use the $116,000 and compare it, the loss of $116,000 and compare it to the loss of $424,000 at the same period last year, we're actually in a better position. So the position mainly relates to the increase in the golf revenue and then the additional $80,000 transfer from the general fund. I know Rob had asked about the golf revenue and where the impact was coming from for the increase in revenue. So I was able to take a look at that. So the majority of the increase is through the months of July through November. But however, in March, when the golf course opened, we're actually up $20,000 in March this year compared to March last year. I don't think there was anything else major on that. So the, related to the COVID impact for the Parks and Recreation Fund. So initially, I assumed that we weren't going to have, that the only thing that was going to come in within budget would be the golf revenue, that we'd have no additional revenue, expenditures would remain on target or within budget. And I came up with a, you know, worst case scenario loss of about $70,000. And that's worst case scenario because if we don't have our special programs, we're not opening activities, obviously, we'll see a decrease in these. So that was the initial assumption. However, when I was, when I was looking at this, I think we had a meeting probably the same day because due to the COVID impact, you would think that we're not going to have summer programs. We're not going to have the opening of the pool. But I was informed by Tom Tversky that he actually talked to the health district and they're saying that some programs, including camps and the pool, could be opened with constraints as early as June. So this changes things. But it changes things in a direction where we can only go up. So if I'm estimating a $70,000 loss, if we do have that extra revenue, that would obviously be a good thing. The only thing that related to that is that the determination hasn't been made. First of all, we don't know what the constraints would be. We don't know that even if we were allowed to open, if we would open, I believe there's going to be a discussion related to that later on with management and then further with the Board of Selectmen. So right now, I guess, for the Parks and Recreation Fund, highly unlikely, but I think the majority of the loss would probably be around $70,000. Parks and Rec Fund. Moving on to the Health Insurance Fund. On the Health Insurance Fund, you'll see that our net change in fund balance was about $881,000. And if you remember when we first budgeted for the Health Insurance Fund last year, we were looking at our premiums and we increased our premiums enough to make the fund solvent, but we didn't increase it enough to add a fund balance. So if we didn't have this additional contribution from the general fund, our fund balance would have increased about $30,000. So the fund is actually doing exactly what we wanted it to do during the budgeting process. So I just wanted to point that out quick. Then also down here, our total reserves, 3.1 million. So as I said before, you want your reserves to be at a target of 20% to 25% of your expected claims. So right now, we're at about 21% of expected claims. And if you remember from the December report, we were at 33% of expected claims. So this just goes to show how fast your claims activity can change. When I reported back in December, we had actually just had some large claims that hit in January. So that took that 33% right down to 21%. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on is typically during the last quarter of the Health Insurance Fund, we see our most, our highest increase in claim. And that's due to the participants that select the high deductible plan. If they've already met their deductible, everything is 100% covered after that. So employees typically take this opportunity to get in any medical exams, treatments, et cetera, that they can while the coverage is at 100%. However, although this is typically the expectation, COVID has closed a lot of doctors' offices to routine appointments. So they are basically taking emergency appointments at some places. They are doing the phone appointments, things of that nature. And then, of course, we don't know what the impact to Simsbury employees that are affected by COVID or if their family is affected by COVID and what impact that's going to have. We don't know the population of anybody if or have, if they've been infected since we don't have the April claims reports yet. Not, I think we'll get those at the middle or the end of May. So I'm trying to see if we can get those claims reports just for a quick update at your next meeting. But just to know that those will be outstanding. Any questions on the Health Insurance Fund? The next fund I just wanted to do a quick update is the Seward Use Fund. So you can see the net change in fund balance of almost 1.2 million. But as you can see, the majority of this relates to the total revenues already being at 99%. Expenditures are only at 65%. So as the year continues to progress, you'll see the fund balance number go down. And I believe that was it. The only other thing I wanted to just give you a quick update on was the Town Aid Road Fund. The only other thing I wanted to, um, just give you a quick update on was the Town Aid Road Fund. Um, so the last time we had a meeting, we weren't sure on the status of the funding. Um, there was communications from the state that it was going to go through, but we hadn't had anything official. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that as of March, we had not received a payment, but we did receive our allocation April. So it's not reflected here, but we did receive our allocation. So I just wanted to make you aware of that as well. And.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that page, Amy?
Yeah, sure.
Um, s- so the social services programs. Uh, first, a comment, just that I was quite impressed that they have fifty thousand dollars of donations. I didn't know that they did fundraising, but, um, so I was sort of surprised at that. Is that typical?
Um, I'd have to look at prior year activity, but, um, I know that there's always an increase in this fund every year. So I would say offhand that yes, this is pretty typical. And then they have money to, um, for resident assistance for either shelter, food, um, payments and utilities, things of that nature.
Yeah, and so I'm, I'm just sort of surprised at, at what a healthy balance they have there, given everything that's going on with the epidemic right now. Um, I would, would have expected to see that get drawn down substantially.
Um, so right now, I know that they have used some of the funds in April for their food programs and for gift cards. So that would be April allocation, so it wouldn't be reflected in here. But I can get you an update for the next meeting if you want.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And then, um, the Community Development Grant, I saw that the fund balance hasn't changed in the last six months. And so I was a little perplexed about that.
This hasn't changed since the eighties. Um, so I guess from what I understand, and there's only one person in the office that I found that knows about this, is this was a grant that was given to the town, um, back in the eighties for development in Tarifville. So this was one of those grants where typically now all grants are reimbursement grants. You spend the money and then they'll give you the money back. Well, this was during the time when, um, they would give you the money upfront and then you were allowed to spend it. So what they did is they gave it for property, property improvements or rehabilitation for some tariff. And they only have to pay the money back to the town when the property is sold. So over the course of several years, um, pretty much all of the properties have been, um, sold with the exception of one. So we're still waiting on one property to be sold and then we'll get our money back. And then that money will have to go back to the state. So that pretty much, um, that fund is going to stay there until that property is sold.
So this is, this is money that has to go back to the state?
Right, eventually, yes.
Uh, Amy, Maria has, uh, something she might want to add. Maria?
Yes, I can add a little bit to the food programs. Um, so in an ordinary month, um, people might be familiar with our Cheese Day program. Um, and typically we have about eighty households that are screened and are eligible to participate in that monthly food distribution program. Um, right now, we're actually seeing about a hundred households when we're doing our food distribution program. And once a month wasn't meeting the need, so we've increased the frequency of our food programs. Um, one of the, uh, issues we are struggling with is that even though people are being incredibly generous and still bringing us non-perishable food items and toiletries, we are just going through those items so quickly. So we have had to, normally, um, we provide fresh, uh, produce, meats at Cheese Day and are able to provide a really good amount of toiletries, um, and non-perishable goods. But it's been really hard for us to keep up with the demand. So we've had to supplement that with, uh, gift cards, as Amy mentioned. So for our families and households that are in need, in addition to a small amount of, uh, non-perishables and toiletries, we're also providing gift cards to grocery stores. Um, so what's been really, um, you know, just sad to see is that, um, folks who have never reached out to us before are reaching out to us. And so we're just having quite an increased demand on, on our food programs. So we're really grateful that we had some of the balances there. We're certainly drawing down on them. Um, we also have some trust funds that are available to us, um, which have been helpful. Um, and we have had a number of, um, some pretty incredible, um, donations that are coming our way to help with the food programs. Uh, but just as a, for example, just the, uh, the most recent, um, food distribution, um, ran us, Amy, I think it was about nine thousand dollars, um, to, to make that happen. So we, there's definitely just a tremendous need right now.
Thanks, Maria.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, Amy, uh, anything else on the budget status report? Any other questions for Amy?
Rob, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is really for Matt. Matt, I know there's been talk about some federal educational dollars coming. Have you gotten any word of that, what, what the town can expect and sort of what your expenditures? And also, um, I know that there's, I heard talk about the need for summer school or making up with regression issues. Are you going to have an expenditure need this summer?
So the, the summer school piece, Lisa, they're, they're, they're coming out with guidance in the next couple of weeks, uh, relative to what that might look like. Uh, if nothing else, we'll engage students in distance learning. Um, obviously with the announcement today, you know, with school quota for the rest of the year, we're, we're concerned about regression for, um, many of our students, you know, most particularly our young learners, you know, our primary age kids and our students with disabilities. So, um, I don't have any kind of hard expenditure numbers for you. I know Amy talked about really looking hard at our projected savings, which we're doing now. Another area that we need to kind of bona fide and, and report back on is substitutes, obviously. Uh, and my hope is that we won't have to u- utilize non-lapsing funding in this current year. So we'll be able to report our larger savings number, um, back to the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance. And that can be the basis of, of some of our early planning this summer and into the next year, obviously with collective conversations amongst the boards.
And then the federal spending?
Yeah, so the, the one piece we have heard is that, um, from the CARES Act, we may be eligible for, um, funding relatable to our Title I funding, um, almost a, close to a matching amount, which would be about a hundred thousand dollars. I haven't seen anything, um, that was a follow-up since that initial communication in terms of timing.
Okay. But you think you're set for now in terms of being able to meet the needs that you are able to evaluate? I, I understand you haven't finished evaluating all the needs, but there's no.
I, I really can't, I can't answer that, Lisa. I mean, it, the situation's so drastic and where we are in terms of figuring out assessments and programs and individualizing things, we'll have a much better idea in the coming months.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, Amy, anything else on budget status report?
There's nothing on budget status, uh, actually, Finance Director's Report is next.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, the COVID relief funding, just because.
Yeah.
So there has been some, um, some federal funding that's become available. Certain programs were eligible for, certain programs were not. Um, I know there's one federal program that came out that no Connecticut city and town is eligible for, just because we're too small. Um, but the two that we are eligible for, that we've had contact with the state on, is the FEMA program and then the coronavirus relief program. So with relation to the FEMA program, they will reimburse their seventy-five percent of our eligible costs for certain activities. So I took, um, I took part in a training for this, um, where we were able to discuss our questions, what's going to be covered, what's not going to be covered. Um, so basically, the, we got an answer of you need to submit everything. We don't know what we're reimbursing for yet. There were specific questions about, will you reimburse for computers, for teleworking? Will you reimburse for food expenditures or gift cards or things of that nature? And probably three times, we've got the same answer, submit for everything and then we'll decide. So they don't know what they're reimbursing for yet. So we know what's eligible and what's not, we're just literally submitting for everything. On the coronavirus relief fund, all of this, um, federal money went to the state and OPM is responsible for dispersing those funds amongst the towns. They sent out a worksheet to be completed based on, um, our anticipated revenue loss, our anticipated, um, COVID-related expenditures. So I sent that in on Friday. And then now we're just waiting for direction from them as to, uh, if they need any additional information, how they're going to make their determination on who gets what. Um, the only thing that I found interesting is I read that these relief programs are for expenditure reimbursement, not for loss of revenue. So, um, I'm not sure if there might be a change to that or included in the estimate somehow. But, um, right now, as far as I'm aware, we will not see any, um, any relief or any aid related to any loss in revenue. It will strictly be for reimbursement of Corona ba, um, Corona-related expenditures. That's all I have on that.
Okay, any questions on the, uh, Finance Director's Report? All right, uh, that mu- brings us to the, uh, continuation of the public hearing. Yeah, go ahead.
One quick question, just for Matt and Maria. Are there any needs that are not being met currently? Or do we feel like you are covering the needs? I'm just trying to make sure that our citizens are, needs are being met. Are you comfortable that our needs are being met at this point?
I mean, I, I'm comfortable, Lisa, in terms of access to technology, which is the platform. You know, we've, we've done things to support people with hotspots and, um, certainly the, the platform or the machines, we are in good shape, uh, with our Chromebooks and iPads. Um, how we assess the needs in terms of regression and those things that you talked about will, will be longer in duration.
I just want you to know that you, you know, I'm prepared to support the town. We have a rainy day fund, it's raining. Let's make sure our needs are being met.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, and on the town side, um, our staff is just incredible. Um, everybody is an essential employee. So with the exception of that very small number of very part-time library staff, everybody is still working. Um, everybody is providing services and staff has just been incredibly creative. We've launched, um, a number of online and virtual services to accommodate folks. Um, I'm just really proud of, of the work that the team is doing to make sure that our critical infrastructure remains functioning and that residents are getting the services they need. Um, and again, we've been so fortunate in that our residents continue to be incredibly generous with their donations that are helping to support our food programs. Again, we have seen just an increased volume in folks needing to access it and even folks who were previously accessing it, um, there's more demand. So, um, again, just really thankful to our, our residents who have stepped up and continue to be very generous and, and helping to support that program.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So, uh, the next step would be to, uh, continue the public hearing, uh, which began on April twenty-first, that we continue to tonight. A couple of things we're going to do. The first is there's one additional comment, which I will read, uh, for the record, and then we're going to review some of the comments from last time. So, uh, this was the only comment submitted for, uh, inclusion tonight. It comes from Joan Ko and I'll read as she submitted it. "We are presently in uncertain times and the budget as presented does not reflect any of the future challenges caused by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. These hearings are charades, giving people false hope that the public hearing will convince the Board of Finance to reject the budgets as submitted. Instead, the Boards of Selectmen, Education and Finance give each other kudos on the budgets as presented. That is totally oblivious to the crisis where people and businesses are hurting financially and the future revenues will be greatly diminished. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education budgets reflect an increase in salaries across the boards that will increase the future longevity benefits. Is this appropriate under these challenging times? All the financial talking heads will not admit that there will be an economic depression caused by sheltering in place due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic throughout the world. There's not enough money to make everyone whole. There will be mass unemployment that will be reflected in lowered future, uh, lower future revenue assumptions. How can businesses make a profit with COVID-nineteen mandates? When businesses cannot open under the COVID-nineteen mandates and there are large business failures, who will the insurance industry insure? The insurance industry will downsize, leaving many people unemployed. What happens when businesses and people cannot repay their debts to the banks? None of these assumptions are reflected in the budgets as presented. It is a business-as-usual mentality. Will anyone care that the manipulated budgets reflect a fifty-dollar reduction in taxes when they are unemployed or on the verge of a business failure? If the budget as presented is passed, everyone can expect a huge increase in taxes next year. This is a kick-the-can-down-the-road mentality from our boards. Why has the Board of Finance approved a wish list of expenditures with a deputy chief's salary of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and a lieutenant with an additional cost of five thousand dollars that will increase the budget long-term? At the present time, there is an ongoing arbitration hearing related to the firing of Sergeant Promby, Prombley, for untruthfulness. The determ, final determination of the arbitration hearing could result in drastic changes in the management of the Police Department. Therefore, these management changes are premature and should be shelved until the results of the hearing are made public. All the indicators are pointing to a financial upheaval due to COVID-nineteen restrictions with mass unemployment, lower revenues, business bankruptcy and mass vacancies. With all these uncertainties, the Board of Finance should not approve the budgets as presented and eliminate all increases to non-essential expenditures. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter, Joan Ko and Facebook." So again, I want to, uh, thank, uh, those who participated on April twenty-first. Uh, I think we, uh, have shared with everyone at that time, uh, the actual, uh, submissions and, uh, they were included in our minutes. Uh, I, I would like to, uh, to a certain extent, just that one other thing I wanted to point out, there were a couple of emails that were received at, at, uh, a different email address for the Board of Finance that were not specifically, uh, designated to be read at the public hearing either, um, last time, April twenty-first or tonight. But I wanted to acknowledge that those have been received and shared with the Board of Finance. Uh, one was from, uh, Dr. Michael Rinaldi. Um, a lot of information, very similar to what he actually submitted, uh, for the public hearing that was read on April twenty-first. And then we also heard from Diane Tracy and Joe Tracy, uh, regarding, uh, their support of open space, uh, consist, uh, similar to others that we heard from. So in terms of responding to, um, the public, uh, hearing, uh, I would note that, um, looking at the, some of the, of the comments, I'm just going to go through, uh, three or four of the categories and, uh, make some observations and ask a couple of others to help respond, uh, to the extent that we feel appropriate. Uh, there were several, uh, comments about making sure that we were, uh, keeping the budget as flat and low or cut it if we could. Uh, seven responded to that, plus, uh, some that wanted us to be sure that, uh, you know, we were, the budget was below, uh, the inflation rate. Uh, two or three specific mentions of the, uh, additional positions that were in the budgets, uh, spe, uh, singling those out as, uh, ones that the Board of Finance, uh, sh- should not, uh, allow. Uh, a little bit of confusion about the actual full-time, uh, equivalents that are in the budget. Uh, certainly the, uh, Deputy Sergeant Police was noted, but there was a reference to an accountant position, which was not an actual new position, but an extension of someone that was hired and been on the payroll from last year. Uh, there were, uh, several people, I, I counted fourteen, that, uh, uh, responded in regards to open space. Uh, one was definitely against the Meadowwood project. The others were generally in favor of open space, uh, broadly. Uh, but there seemed to be some confusion about the, uh, uh, whether the town was intending to dispose of open space. So several spoke to that. And maybe I could ask Maria just to, uh, maybe comment on, uh, that aspect of, uh, the, the dialogue we heard relative to open space.
Sure, so we have, uh, three items right now, um, that I would say key items related to open space. So I think most of those comments, uh, were around. And one is the potential, uh, acquisition of the Meadowwood parcel. Um, we were approached, uh, last year by the Trust for Public Land, um, to see if there would be an interest, um, from the town in purchasing approximately two hundred and eighty-eight acres from the parcel that's known as Meadowwood. Um, so we did have a full presentation to the Board of Selectmen about that potential acquisition at their April sixth meeting. Um, that's available online and the packet materials are online. So that's a really good initial overview, um, for folks who might be interested in learning more about that. Um, the second item, uh, that's underway is the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Um, so we have a steering group, um, that's, uh, consists of some staff members as well as some open space committee members and some cultural park and rec commission members, um, who've been working with a consulting team from Weston and Sampson on that draft plan. Um, we do not have a final report yet ready to present to the board. We do not have a final report yet ready to present to the Board of Selectmen. And one of the topics that came up is we heard from some folks in the community that they would like to see more mountain biking opportunities. And then we also heard from some folks in the community who would like to see us be more restrictive about which parcels we actually permit mountain biking on. So some of the comments around Ethel Walker and mountain biking is really around that draft master plan that that's currently underway. And then the third open space item is we are working on obtaining an easement for the bike path that will eventually be the downtown to Curtis Park connector. And we were also approached by the property owner who had an interest in potentially purchasing a small amount of open space behind their property. So there is a referral process for that that is required, and there were a number of our boards and committees that had to weigh in on that. We will need to, we are required to schedule a public hearing for that. We've been sort of holding that in abeyance at the moment because of our meetings being close to the public. As you know, it's a little more challenging to have a public hearing remotely, but that will be the next step in the process, would be for the Board of Selectmen to schedule a public hearing about that potential disposition of that small parcel off of Holcombe Street. So those are probably, I think, the three key open space items that are, that are in play at the moment.
Okay, thank you, and yeah, I just wanted to clarify, there, there was originally in the Board of Selectmen budget capital item for the Meadowwood project, and we felt at the Board of Finance that it was very premature to consider that in this year because it hadn't even been identified. And so it was removed from the Board of Selectmen budget before it was, it's at one of the stages before it became. It's not part of this budget. I would say from the Board of Finance's view, we have not seen the project have any information about it by which we could consider whether it's appropriate now or ever. So I don't want people to be misled that we're in favor of that. If it comes at a later date, we, we know not enough about it and we were anxious to see the long-range plan for open space. And if there's other comments from the Board of Finance relative to open space. But there is no immediate attempt to sell broad parts of our open space, and certainly there'll be an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to present that going forward. Is that fair? Anyone else want to add to that from our board? All right, so then the next item is a little bit related. There was some discussion of the Parks and Rec. That was a full-time equivalent position that was cut from the budget. So there are people speaking in, in support of more spending for Parks and Rec. And then partly a discussion about Parks and Rec in conjunction with open space. So I would hope that both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance can think about the appropriate amounts of budgets that would be necessary to both maintain that, whether it's appropriate the way we have that set up. There was a suggestion that maybe we were confused about the relative cost of maintaining the parks versus the open space. Then the next item was relative to the education budget. There were some issues or suggestions that, given these hard times, that we should have frozen salaries and frozen headcount. It was a question about redistricting, and is that a more efficient way to allocate students to where we have room for them versus modulars? And then just a general comments about our relative cost to inflation and relative cost to per pupil versus our peer group. Maybe Matt, you could just speak to the redistricting question or some of the other things that you heard a week and a half ago.
Yeah, so I, I think the redistricting comments are tied up a bit in the overall facilities master plan and studies that we engaged in and spent a lot of time on, particularly to Latimer Lane. So going forward to next year and our projections, we do not have a capacity issue at Latimer Lane. I mean, the class sizes are larger than at the other schools, but it's in future years we would need to consider that. So I, I still in our planning think that that's part of that facility study where we did say we may have to look at redistricting at several, several schools depending on where we end up. So in terms of this year's budget planning, it's not of an impact, but I think it will be part of future conversations across the schools. It was interesting, and this, I don't want to get too far down the beaten path, but the commissioner today, and we have a conference call tomorrow, starting to talk about alternate plans for opening in the fall around very restricted numbers. So that's something we're really going to have to think about, how it plays into the classroom setting, how we get prepared for next year around social distancing. So I put that out there, not to complicate things, but to think about in our overall plans as we move forward. As far as the headcount, Rob, actually the Board of Ed is net down a little bit. I mean, not significantly, but I think it was an FTE and a half. And as I know you're all aware, our contracts, they're collectively bargained, so to go in and open a contract isn't just a unilateral decision by any of us. And I think these three boards have worked pretty hard to, to get the budget number where it is. And today, and we've also talked briefly about the challenges that are ahead of us. So I know a lot of conversations will be on the table next year as we get into the planning process.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
And then the, the last topic that was discussed at the public hearing was the library. A lot of people in support, I counted at least eight submittals in support of the $20,000 addition to the materials. And I would just let everyone know that that was, that full $20,000 was in the budget that was referred to the public hearing. So those people were spoken for. Are there any other responses or questions from the public hearing that we feel we should address as a Board of Finance?
Rob, I have a couple of comments to make, but not necessarily about the hearing. Let me know when it's appropriate to do so.
Well, we're, we're going to move to close the hearing in a minute, so I, I wanted to do that. And then there'd be a discussion about what the Board of Finance does next, and it'll be plenty of time for everyone to talk at that. So having held the, the hearing, I, I hope that we've addressed these issues. It's, again, I'm grateful for the participation of all of the citizens that submitted and, and participated. We appreciate your passion for your point of view and certainly take all of that into consideration as we look at the budget. So I would be looking for a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved, Lisa?
Lisa? Art, Art House seconds, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you for your participation, the public hearing is now closed. And with that, we will move to discuss the next steps in the budget process. This is truly a unique year because we've just concluded a public hearing to which the public was not invited. And now we're about to discuss a referendum for the budget that will not be held. So let's walk through, before we actually get to the substance of what we need to do, sort of the timeline, the executive orders and how we will proceed. There was some confusion about the timelines of some of the executive orders that all got very clarified last week, yesterday. And what, the, the governor has made it very clear that he will not allow town meetings or, or referendums for the passing of municipal budgets. About a month ago, they had established an alternative method, which would be for the Board of Selectmen or the ruling body in any town to designate a budget approving method or authority. And there was a motion by the Board of Selectmen to do that for the Board of Finance. What was unclear was that the, the timeline was going to expire on May 20th, that's now not the case. So we are going to move in a, in a cadence like we were going to have a referendum. In other words, we're going to move a budget, hopefully tonight, to a, what would be a referendum, we'll publish the budget, we'll notice it and do that. And then in lieu of a referendum, we will meet again on May 19th. And the Board of Finance will vote to approve the budget and set the mill rate at that time. So as, that's all a prelude, and this has been blessed by Town Council, and everyone's looked at all of the executive orders, we've talked to Bond Council. We're on pretty good ground doing it this way by order of the, of the governor. So what that means is that we need to look at the budget as we have it in its state today and discuss it and then vote on it. And I have a long list of resolutions that we would then need to move and pass as a Board of Finance. Melissa, am I missing anything, or Amy?
That covers it.
Okay, all right, so the, yeah, I, I guess my position is that there were a lot of good comments about things that we should, could, might do, should have considered. There's a lot of things that we don't know about the next fiscal year, and it's frustrating for all of us, especially our taxpayers who have lost their jobs and everything. We're, we're very aware and conscious of that. I think the budgets that were initiated back at our tri-board meeting were, you know, brought forward, they were vetted, they were, you know, cut and recommendations were whittled down to what we finally got to be the Board of Finance budget. Admittedly, the world was changing very rapidly right underneath us, and so I think it would be impossible to know or see what was coming. On the other hand, we don't really know what's going to happen next year. I think it, you know, we've made some concessions to get to a budget that has a slight decrease in the, in the mill rate. But we're, we're going based on some, some, you know, frankly, some assumptions that we're hoping will, will come true, but we're not at all certain will. Support from the state, collection rates on our taxes, expenses, revenues from fees, everything. But I think it's our responsibility to move a budget, pass a budget, be in a position to send the tax bills out and keep the town running the best we can. As Maria and Matt and everybody said, the people are, you know, that work for our, our town are doing a really, really great job, and we need to have the, the support for that. So
I didn't get that, could you try again?
Sorry, Siri. I don't know what she didn't get, it was, anyway. So I, I would propose that we consider the budgets as we have them tonight and move them to the referendum slash approval by Board of Finance, but I'm certainly willing to have, listen to all of our members and your feedback. Lisa?
Yeah, thanks. First of all, I would thank you, Rob, for your leadership through this budget process. We've had a few strange budget scenarios with you in charge, and I want to thank you for yet again in the midst of COVID, and also to thank all three boards for their work and collaboration transparency. I think a real testament to their commitment to the town. I did want to mention that we set out with this budget to reduce the mill rate in recognition of the economic hardship that we're seeing right now, and at the same time to fund essential services while preserving healthy reserve for COVID unknowns, and this budget does that. And I think our residents can be proud of that. We were able to do that. I do want to mention, in large part because we had strong grand list growth this year, and by not implementing pension assumptions, including investment and mortality. We did it also by reducing operating budgets to a small degree and also limiting bonding. But what this budget does not address will need to be addressed in the future, and those are the adjusted mortality assumptions recommended by our actuary and the lower pension and investment assumptions. So I think coming next year, we're going to see some, a very tough budget. I think this budget is appropriate this year, but we did put some things off that will need to be addressed either next year or in the coming years, depending on what the economic recovery looks like. But unfortunately, I think it is important that our public understand this was not a one-year tough budget. It is the beginning of a minimal three-year tough budget process, probably a decade or 20 years, if you read some of the reports out there. The pension investment assumptions that we didn't address is about $1 million, and we're also going to have to increase our ARK payments. We're likely going to see smaller grand list growth, potential lost business revenue, potential diminished residential taxpayer ability to pay, and a likely reduction in state aid if you read the numbers that Lamont just put out in the last week. So I guess my point is the road ahead is tough, but we are well positioned. And Rob, credit you and the Board of Finance for keeping the reserves as healthy as they are. We are well prepared to, to make it, and we'll make those decisions collaboratively and, and with a commitment to meeting the needs of our residents. So I do want to commend everyone who worked on this project and thank everyone.
Thank you, Lisa. Linda, you're, you're unmuted, so.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I had a couple of thoughts about the budget going forward. One I've discussed with Amy is that when, when we created this budget, we used the governor's proposed budget as an underlying assumption. And that's no longer the budget that's going forward at the state. It's the biennial budget, which is a slightly lower amount of money to us than the governor's budget, precisely $190,000 lower. Not a huge amount, but it's bigger than a breadbox. So I, I would like to see us correct our budget for that amount. I do understand that that has a little bit of impact on the savings that we've talked to people about that they might see in, in their tax bill. And there are two things that I think can offset that, in fact, more than offset that. One might be, and we don't have an exact number, but potential savings from the current year in the Board of Ed, if that, if that could be put towards the non-lapsing fund and, you know, used towards the budget next year, that might be, I mean, I know that's not a precise number at this point, but perhaps by the time we finalize a budget, it will be more precise. Amy tells me it's about $200,000 or roughly thereabouts, is that correct, Amy? Or Matt?
For the Board of Education, right now it's about $350,000.
So, so there's some money there that we ought, ought to be thinking about how that could be deployed. And secondly, and buckle your seatbelts, everybody, because you'll all probably freak out when I say this, but there's a lot of money in the police private duty account. That account has grown since the last time I looked at it. And, you know, we're talking about adding a position to the police and maybe for this first year. I think everybody felt the compelling case was made. But maybe we fund that position using the $300-plus thousand that are in the police slush fund there that, that they keep when they do private duty police work. And I know that's not something we've discussed, but that also could serve to give some tax relief to our taxpayers.
Okay, thanks, Linda. Art, I'll get to you in a minute. Kevin, unmuted, muted first, so he gets to go next.
Thanks, thanks, Rob. I, I want to echo, you know, my thanks to, to all three boards for all their work and, and same thing with the town employees. You know, again, echo what Lisa said, you know, we were very fortunate. We had grand growth list to offset any of the increases that we had to the, to the budget. We had grand growth list to offset any of the increases that we had to the budgets. You know, again, I felt it was inappropriate to have the boards go back and adjust their budgets when there is so much uncertainty taking place with around COVID. You know, from my expectations, you know, going forward, you know, I see very little support coming from the state. They were strapped with money prior to this. They were looking for ways to push their expenses back up on the towns, and I would expect that to take place in the future with a little bit more authority. You know, going forward, you know, from my expectations, you know, the following year, I would kind of expect zero growth budgets, but that's my opinion. You know, one of the things, you know, again, I didn't feel it was appropriate that we went back to the boards to adjust their budgets. That's one of the reasons why I think we build the reserves, and we have the collection rate the way it is in order to offset any of the expenses that take place in the short term. So, thanks.
Thank you. Art?
Yeah, can you hear me? Am I off mute?
Yes.
I just, Rob, I just want to say, I like, in our budget, we've done a lot of work. This is my first time through, and I think it's a good budget, given the constraints we're on. And I just wanted to pick up on the points about looking down the road and the pain we're going to be feeling in the next couple of years. And one of the elephants in the room is collective bargaining. It's salaries are such a huge part of everything we're doing, and Matt made the point that the contract's a contract, and you know, no one has suggested, and we can't go back and say, okay, we're going to have to tighten the belts for employees. But I do think that going forward, we cannot just assume there will be the automatic cost of living built in as a starting point for future years. And I just want to put that out as a note for our bargainers going forward, that you've got a Board of Finance, and however, education and selectmen coming to this is their business, but that is going to be looking for an adjustment going forward, that we're not going to be able to simply have automatic cost of living assumptions as we have in some past years. Part of the burden of adjusting for the cuts we're making now are going to have to be part of the salary structure going forward as well. I just want to lay that marker down.
Thank you, Art. Appreciate that. Derek, you good? Are you there? You're off mute.
Oh, I know, but my phone was on mute. I didn't know if it was a double mute situation.
Double mute.
Look, I share a lot of the same concerns that were talked about during the public hearing. As a matter of, I don't think this is a difficult budget at all, actually. It was almost too early to contemplate the effects of COVID. And, you know, I echo what a lot have said about next year's budget as well. Just to kind of put it in perspective, I mean, we all read the news. You know, this Friday, the unemployment rate, the unemployment numbers are going to come out, and it's going to be the highest that it's ever been recorded. 22 million jobs will have been lost in April alone, which wipes out gains of the last decade. So just keep that in mind, this COVID, and, you know, to Matt's point about talking about, you know, already talking about how you might have to have alternate plans in the fall for opening schools, this is going to change, I mean, think about people going back to work. It's going to change the way people do things in general. But in terms of the job losses, what it's going to really make people do is think about how they spend their money. You know, the Fed has basically telegraphed that we are going to be in a low interest rate environment for a long time. So to Art's point, think fixed incomes, think, you know, low interest rates, and, you know, think unfunded liabilities as well. Next year could be a really difficult year. You know, I think we are kicking the can a little bit, but I also believe, given, you know, the over $2 trillion in stimulus and what the Fed has done, we need to let this kind of flow through, and hopefully the PPP helps people. Hopefully, the fact that we're keeping our teachers employed and everybody, you know, and the Board of Ed stable, that's a good thing. So, but it definitely will affect going forward, again, people's spending habits, you know, and the attractiveness, whether good or bad, for people moving to Simsbury. It'll change the people, the way people do work, the people, the way people go to school. So those are all, you know, things that I think about. I would just lastly, you know, say, I hope that people have short memories, which means that this will be behind us, call it within the next year, and, you know, we can all get back to business as usual, but, you know, I don't anticipate that. I anticipate a difficult budget next year. But at the same time, I think it is a little bit too early to make drastic COVID stresses to our budget, and would like to see it go forward as presented.
Thank you, Derek. Appreciate that. I just, you'll get one more chance, Linda. That's all right. I was going to just amplify what Art said and Lisa said relative, and others, all of us said about next year's budget being a difficult one. If some of the things that materialize, and they will, in, they will definitely materialize, this question to what degree, but the solutions that's going to make the budgets next year hard are not just going to be, we need to collect more taxes. There's going to, there are going to be some fundamental changes to the cost structure, and because, you know, if the state really finds itself in dire straits, as we, so many people expect and predict, that it's going to be a budget that's going to be difficult, both because of the need to tax more and to cut expenditures in a very, very meaningful way. So knowing, having identified these large expenditures like the pension plan and the rest. So Linda, do you have one other comment, or?
I had a question for Kevin, and then I will follow up with a question for you, Rob, about how to proceed on my suggestions. But Kevin, I'm not sure I understood your point when you were saying, and I want to understand it, that you didn't think we should have asked the Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed to go back and make cuts to their budget? And my understanding is true.
Yeah, I mean, in the, yeah, you're correct. In the current environment, I just didn't think it was appropriate to go back and ask them, not knowing the full extent taken, that the current extent of the issues today.
So you wanted to approve everything they asked for as it was originally? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. I meant just going back in and saying that they needed to cut their budget down to zero increase this year. I didn't think that was appropriate.
Okay, misunderstood then, yeah. So I had thrown on the table, Rob, sort of three different things, so can we take those up?
Yeah, so what I was going to do was, and I completely hear what you're saying. It'd be nice to have it all lined up if we could. But I'm looking at a calendar and the material ups and downs and the unknowns, so that, you know, my personal view is that we should move these forward as they are. We do get one last chance when we look at, after we approve it on March, excuse me, May 19th, to finally set the mill rate. But so I think procedurally, what we should do is have a vote as to whether or not we should go back and fine-tune the budget, if you will, to a few of the known knowns, recognizing that there are many, many unknowns as it relates to both where we'll end up on this fiscal year and what support we might have. So your suggestion really is to true up the ECS number that's in the biennial budget versus the Governor's budget. That's about $190,000. And then.
And we don't have to do it today, as long as you're willing to consider doing it the next time we get together. I mean, I'm okay with that.
Okay, but so that, this is going to be a question for Amy and Melissa. If we send the budget as we've approved it to the referendum, meaning our vote on May 19th, when we're done with that, when, before we set the mill rate, can we adjust revenues and expenditures? Or do we, are those then become accepted? It's really the revenue, I think, that we're talking about. Melissa or Amy question?
Yeah, I don't know if Melissa knows, but I thought that you guys could only set the mill rate, but given the Governor's executive order, I'm honestly not sure, because you guys are the budget-making authority and setting body.
So let me make one other point, which is if we changed the budget tonight, do we need to do, do we need to post the revised budget and do another public hearing?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Shaking her head no.
So can I make a case then for fixing the $190,000? I mean, we spent a lot of time going back and forth, about $20,000 for the library, about $5,000.
Fully respect that. I agree. I completely agree with you. I get that.
And so we are overestimating our revenue by $190,000 if we don't fix this. And that means in a subsequent year, the hole is $190,000 bigger if state revenues go down, which you're predicting they will. So to me, the prudent thing is to, and it isn't an unknown, it's an absolutely known, that we're $190,000 off, that we should at least start with the most accurate information that we have. And I don't think it's a huge amount of work to make that fix.
What does it, what, Amy, what happens to the mill rate if we put the $190,000? I know I asked you to look at that.
All right, so it makes the mill rate go from 37.09 to 37.17, a decrease of .15 mills, and then the median home impact decreases from $49 to $32 savings.
Okay. Is there any known corresponding expenditure that's too high or revenue that's too low that we, that would rise to the same level as the ECS payment?
So that's kind of a loaded question.
Yes.
I suppose two things that could offset.
Theoretically, if we wanted to revise some stuff, we should be looking at the investment income. We should probably be looking at library revenue. We should be looking at the tax relief program and the loss in that revenue. Additional education expenditures, which obviously we don't know. Will there be more costs for PP&amp;E, cleaning supplies? You know, what is going to be the impact on the Parks and Rec program income? As far as expenditures on the deputy chief, it's unlikely right now for a July 1 start date, so we'll likely see some start, some savings there. By the time we get the town hall open, the job posted, and the interviews through Personnel Subcommittee, highly unlikely that that position will land on July 1. We also have our year-end savings estimates, which we could use to offset. However, again, we don't know if we're going to need some of those estimates for the rest of this year to get through the homeschooling, or next year to have an early opening, or a summer school. We don't know what we're going to get for FEMA reimbursement next year, so we could have additional revenues there as well. I would not book a receivable in this year, because they will not give us any guidance as to what is being covered. And then the last thing is the collection rate that we have the built-in reserve, so we know we have some savings there as well.
Good question, Rob.
Yeah, Lisa.
First of all, thank you, Linda, for that suggestion. I certainly understand the rationale for considering that. I did have a question for Amy that I would ask the clerk to record her answer to. Amy, is there anything material that has changed since we presented this budget that you feel needs to be done as a material change to the budget for us to meet our fiduciary duty?
Nothing that I'm aware of that I can properly quantify.
If the clerk could just record that. The $190 does sound like a lot of money, but it's not technically a material change, given all the other uncertainties that we know with likelihood of getting FEMA reimbursement and all these other things. So it's, in some ways, while I understand, Lynda, your impetus for it, I don't see it as crucial, because it's not a material change, and we presented this to the public. And at this point, there are so many unknowns, but I do appreciate your point that it will create a hole next year. But at this point, there are so many holes, so many unknowns. I would not recommend using the non-lapsing, because I think the schools' needs are so uncertain at this point and could be dramatic. I wouldn't want to use savings this year for needs that they may have in the coming year. But those are my thoughts. I'm open to hearing more.
So by that logic, though, then you could throw the Parks and Rec position in there, because that's not material either.
That's true. That's true. But this is the budget that we, but this is the budget that we presented. So that's my only point, to make the change now, is, which is why, but why I'm not totally against it either, because what you're recommending is logical and reasonable. And one thing that has changed since we presented the budget is that the legislature did not go back into session, and we had assumed they would. And we always use the Governor's budget as part of our estimate. But this year, we actually know that that's not going to be the case, which is why I'm not objecting to it. My only hesitancy is because people are struggling with their finances right now. Do we want to lower the taxes that are going to be received right now? Would we can accommodate that through our current revenues and our tax collection assumption and our reserves if needed? But I, this is a tough call. I don't know the right answer to that. So I am definitely open to persuasion here.
So I haven't heard anybody comment on the notion that you can offset that $190 by funding the police position through the police private duty fund?
So just quick on the private duty fund, you can do that. There were some capital expenditures that are expected to hit that fund this year of $165,000. So if I take the fund balance after the $165,000, it leaves a fund balance in that private duty fund of about $280,000.
Which example?
Just wanted to.
If you use, that's after the $190 and the $165? Or there's $280 before, we would use some?
No, so the fund balance after the $165,000 transfer to capital is $280.
Okay.
This has not been run by the Police Commission, however, yet, right? Is Sean on the line?
He's probably a bird.
Sean, if you're still there, I think you're.
He is, he is.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard of this, and I know the Police Commission hasn't had a chance to weigh in as well. And again, if you raid the fund, which certainly in your purview, you're only fixing it for one year. You have the hole the next year, so you haven't fixed the problem by raiding a fund, so. Well, this is what's gotten the state in trouble, is the legislature's raided the funds, right?
So this is, Kevin, I'm comfortable with the budget that was presented.
Okay, so procedurally, and I think we all have a lot of respect for what you're suggesting, Linda, but I think that I would ask somebody procedurally to say, I think we should move the budget without amending it, and take a poll, and take a vote as a Board of Finance, whether that's the route we should take tonight.
So I'll make that motion.
And a second? So Derek seconded that. So all in favor of not amending the budget for the change in ECS? and referring that to the referendum approval May 9th, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Linda?
No, I'll live with it. It's okay. I'm not happy about it, but nothing in the world.
Okay. Well, again, very respectful of your position, so. All right, having said that, that brings us to the action that we need to take, which is to refer this, these budgets to the referendum. And we have a series of resolutions that I need to read into the record. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
You're right next to me, and I've got to be sure I'm doing this the right way. All right.
I can pull them up, too, if everyone wants.
Well, I'll read them. I think I have them here, right?
They're in your packet, yep.
And then do we get the, so that's this fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget motions, which starts move to approve the Board of Selectmen?
That's right.
Okay, so all right. All right, so I'm going to read these into the record. And then you have the ombudsman or the wraparound language, so that I don't have to read all of the capital ones, right?
Let's hope.
Hope so.
Yeah, if you follow this document from top to bottom, you will be offset.
Great. All right, here we go. Move to approve the Board of Selectmen 2020, 2021 operating budget in the amount of $24,104,638 to include the following changes from the Board of Selectmen's approved budget. Elimination of Parks Facility Maintenance Technician Position, $94,980. Reduced pension contribution by keeping investment assumptions consistent with current assumptions, $396,145. Move to approve the Board of Education 2020, 2021 operating budget in the amount of $72,309,61 and non-public budget of $551,383. Move to approve the Water Pollution Control 2020, 2021 operating budget in the amount of $4223,421, including Avon and Granby CWF share. Move to approve the Residential Rental Properties 2020, 2021 operating budget in the amount of $45,872. Move to approve the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund 2020, 2021 operating budget in the amount of $2137,781. Move to approve the debit, the debt service and cash for capital appropriation for the 2021, 2020, 2021 operating budget in the amount of $5471,465 to include the following changes from the Board of Selectmen approved budget. Eliminate transfer to capital reserve, $50,000. Eliminate open space acquisition, $2200,000. Change the funding source for the following projects from cash to bonds. Public Works Facility paving and storm drainage, sidewalk reconstruction, district network infrastructure. Move to approve the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund 2020, 2021 operating budget in the amount of $1498,200 to include the following changes from the Board of Selectmen approved budget. Eliminate compensation and classification study, $40,000. Eliminate utility van, $46,000. Eliminate various playscapes, playground refurbishments, $25,000. Eliminate Simsbury Farms rink fencing, $8,000. Change the funding source for various drainage improvements from cash to bonds. Move to adopt resolutions of the Board of Finance. The reading into the minutes of the full text of the resolution set out below was waived. Copies of the resolutions have been made available to those in attendance and recorded in these records immediately preceding these minutes. Resolve, resolutions. Resolve that the Board of Finance recommends and approves the following projects. Move to approve radio system upgrade replacement in the amount of $1202,000 to be funded with bonds. Move to approve Greenway improvements in the amount of $135,000 to be funded with cash. Move to approve highway pavement management in the amount of $1205,000 to be funded with bonds, cash, and grants. Move to approve plow truck in the amount of $258,000 to be funded with grants. Move to approve Public Works Facility paving and storm drainage in the amount of $330,000 to be funded with bonds. Move to approve sidewalk reconstruction in the amount of $200,000 to be funded with bonds. Move to approve secondary clarifier wear covers in the amount of $275,000 to be funded by the Sewer Use Fund. Move to approve district network infrastructure in the amount of $500,000 to be funded with bonds. Do I have to keep going?
Nope, you just need a second.
All right. Somebody, seconded by who?
Kevin.
Kevin seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any, we hear from Art. Art, you're good? Linda, you're good?
I approve, yes.
Yeah, okay. Are there any, anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution to pass. All right. Is that all we have to do? Is that easy? It's a lot of hard work, a lot of uncertainty, a lot of things that need to be done. But again, I appreciate everybody's service to the town. It's very, very, very important. Lot of input.
Question for Melissa. We don't need to waive the full text of the other reserve resolved motions?
Yeah, we did.
We did, okay.
It was in there. I went right by it, fast. Okay.
Yeah, you took care of it.
All right, so just one more time to be clear. We're going to meet again on May 19th. The town will publish this, these budgets, notice them appropriately. And then we will meet with the intention of approving these budgets and setting the mil rate on May 19th. All right. Thank you, everybody. We need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Linda, seconded by everybody. All in favor, say aye. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.